We're having some problems.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council regular meeting this Monday evening, December 1st. I now call this meeting to order. Tonight, Craig Weisner, Reach and Teach co-owner, former San Mateo County LGBTQ+ Commissioner, and San Mateo Daily Journal columnist, will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the presentation of the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're excited to be here in person tonight with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. It says deputy clerk still. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item.
Mayor Newsom, would you like me to take roll call?
Sure. I missed that. Wouldn't be me if I didn't miss one thing on my last minute. Please.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin tonight's meeting with our consent calendar, which includes the business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to remind all in the room and online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting, as it tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is to give respect and get respect. And we appreciate your cooperation with this. City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes: Approval. Item number two, housing element implementation, tenant protection policies, ordinance adoptions. Item number three, digital evidence software subscription: Agreement. Item number four, parking enforcement services: Amendment. Item number five, multi-jurisdictional disparate impact study with Hart MOU approval. Item number six, Marina Lagoon pump station physical hydraulic model study: Agreement. Item number seven, Bay Meadows MU3 final map and subdivision improvement: Agreement. Item number eight, 28th Avenue Hillsdale Gap closure: Amendment. Item number nine, 2024 Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association Annual Report Acceptance. Item number 10, Bermuda Drive Bridge Replacement Project: Agreement. Item number 11, permitting support for citywide creeks maintenance program appropriation and agreement. Item number 12, Basin Sea sanitary sewer rehabilitation project contingency increase. And finally, item number 13, wastewater treatment plant annual major components improvements: Agreement. And before further action is taken on the consent calendar, I will first invite our city attorney to make a comment regarding item number two, housing element implementation tenant protection policies ordinance adoption.
Yes, thank you. So I want to clarify that in the new Tenant Protection Ordinance, Chapter 10.100, the change in the citation to state law that was mentioned at the last city council meeting, that will be carried forward into the codified ordinance. And just for clarification, that's to Civil Code Section 1946.2b2. And the importance of that is to clarify that the 11-month threshold that would apply to tenants covered under this ordinance would apply in situations where it's a no-fault, just-cause eviction. So that's the significance of that state law citation correction. So again, that was mentioned at the last council meeting, and that will be carried forward into the codified ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time for you to make your public comments. This is for consent calendar items only. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests for publics?
Yes, Mayor Newsom. We've received two requests to speak on our consent calendar, one in our in-person environment and one in our virtual environment. Seen no additional requests to speak on the consent calendar. Our one and only speaker in council chambers will be Edgar Ryan Silva, and our one and only speaker in our virtual environment will be Mike Swire. We will begin with our in-person requests to speak, and I invite Edgar Ryan Silva to the podium, and we will have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Edgar Ryan Silva, and I am here in strong support of item number five. The county recently committed over $41 million dollars to build 636 new affordable homes across San Mateo County, a major regional investment. But to make sure those resources reach the communities experiencing the most pressure, we need clear data on who is being displaced, on where those risks are concentrated. I live right by North Central, and according to the Equity Priority Community Map based on U.S. Census Bureau American Community Service data, North Central is classified as an equity priority community because it meets key thresholds: higher rates of low-income households, renters, people of colors, limited English proficiency. higher rates of low-income households, renters, people of colors, limited English proficiency, and housing cost burdened families. This designation has been consistent across multiple ACS cycles, showing that the neighborhood's vulnerability is clearly longstanding. I encourage the city to pair this work with strong community engagement once the results are released, especially in neighborhoods like North Central where the average two-bedroom rent in San Mateo is now over $4,000 a month, while a full-time minimum wage worker earns about $2,860 a month before taxes. For a household to afford that rent at the recommended 30% of income, they would need to make over $130,000 a year, or roughly $63 an hour, nearly four times the state minimum wage. When the basic math of living here doesn't work for most working families, it becomes even more important that those residents are included in shaping how the city responds to displacement risks. This study is fundamentally about data-driven justice, making sure decisions are guided by the lived realities of the communities most impacted. And ultimately, this is about asking, when will San Mateo be seen as a city that lifts up its people instead of standing in the way of greater housing opportunity? Is it no longer possible to work an honorable job and still afford a home in this city? And what will it take to make that a reality again for our San Mateo residents? The best way to answer that is by using this study to drive real policy, targeted anti-displacement strategies, fair housing protections, and investments that reach the neighborhoods carrying the heaviest burden. That's how San Mateo turns data into outcomes that keeps family housed. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next and final speaker will be from our virtual environment. I invite Mike Swire. Please unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Newsom and members of the council. Happy holidays. Thanks for letting me speak and for your service. I wanted to add one quick thing to the previous comment, which I fully support, is that one of the additional criteria for a equity priority community is actually the percentage of households that do not own a car. And that's very important in North Central, given that this council is considering removing safety infrastructure for those who cannot afford a car. I also wanted to comment quickly on agenda number eight, which is the 28th Avenue Hillsdale Gap Closure Project. I'm glad that this is finally moving forward, I think. It sounds like this project was first released by the TA in 2020, and it's been five years. And unfortunately, we're only at 35% in the design phase. The staff report says that the reason for that delay is that this is, quote, "due to staff shortages and vacancies," or vacancies, not vacations, "in the transportation section." Due to that, the project is currently on hold. This is really frustrating that communities across the city are not being able to see safety infrastructures, projects in their neighborhoods because of the city's obsession with the bike lanes in North Central, a project that was only implemented three years ago. We've spent tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, dollars with the North Central Complete Street Plan. Now we're dipping into Measure S funds, which could be used on safety infrastructure throughout the city. I asked the council to please put that issue to bed and move on and stop spending money on a project when we have hundreds of other projects at over $100 million that require funding and it's delaying safety improvements in my neighborhood. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment on the consent calendar.
Very good. Are there any council members who would like to make a comment before we ask for a motion?
I was going to motion.
We will take your motion.
Second.
Could please call roll?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Svirko Guditsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now move on to the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting. So I have another script. And I will call on Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is a special night indeed, and it is my pleasure to begin a recognition of the outgoing Mayor Robert Newsom Jr. We have a formal commendatory resolution thanking you for your year as mayor, and I am going to first hold it up to show everybody how cool it looks. Ah, I really appreciate the vocalizations. And now I will read it. Resolved by the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California, that Robert Newsom Jr. has served the residents of San Mateo as a highly regarded member of the City Council since 2022 and has completed his first term as mayor from December 2024 to December 2025. And whereas Mayor Newsom distinguished himself through an accessible and collaborative leadership style, engaging directly with residents at countless neighborhood meetings, community events, and public celebrations. And whereas he presided over numerous special and regular meetings with steady guidance, encouraging transparency, respectful dialogue, and thoughtful policy development. And whereas, under his leadership, the city advanced significant initiatives in housing, public safety, sustainability, and infrastructure, including presiding over the ribbon cutting of the upgraded wastewater treatment plant, the largest infrastructure project in city history, strengthening climate resilience and safeguarding the San Francisco Bay. And whereas, Mayor Newsom supported the city's commitment to housing stability by advancing consideration of an emergency rental assistance program, including funding and an agreement with Samaritan House to administer the program, reinforcing San Mateo's dedication to preventing displacement and supporting vulnerable residents. And whereas, Mayor Newsom supported and strengthened San Mateo's longstanding sister-city relationship with Toyanaka Japan by leading a delegation of staff and students to participate in the historic 2025 Osaka-Kansai World Expo, showcasing the city's commitment to youth engagement and cross-cultural exchange. He further welcomed Toyanaka's visiting delegation to San Mateo for the Youth Baseball Exchange, even taking the mound to throw out a first pitch during the week of friendly games culminating in a Central Park doubleheader. Together, these activities reaffirmed the enduring value of international friendship and community partnership that has defined the San Mateo-Toyanaka bond for more than six decades. And whereas, Mayor Newsom helped break ground on the Central Park Playground renovation project, launching an $8.5 million investment to create an inclusive, imaginative, and community-inspired play space for children of all ages and abilities. This effort reflects the city's broader commitment to renewing public spaces, strengthening neighborhood amenities, and building infrastructure that will serve families for generations to come. And whereas, Mayor Newsom's lifelong commitment to service is reflected in his deep roots in San Mateo as a lifelong peninsula resident, Eagle Scout, and engaged community member. And his dedication to youth, civic leadership, and community building was recognized through his selection as a 2025 Distinguished Citizen Award Honoree by the Pacific Skyline Council. And whereas, Mayor Newsom's service has been lovingly shared and supported by his family. His wife Jennifer and their daughters Maeve and Mara, affectionately known as San Mateo's First Family, with the girls proudly embracing their roles as the city's first daughters. Their beloved first dog, Minnie, who charmed residents at many community events and even presided over Central Park's dog festivities before her recent passing, is fondly remembered as part of the city's extended family. Throughout his mayoral year, Mayor Newsom became known for his mayoral superpower, arriving from a demanding workday, changing into a suit in the blink of an eye, and leading council proceedings with calm focus and unwavering dedication. And whereas, and finally, his way of moving through the world with clarity of purpose, long-term vision, a steady sense of what matters most, and an easy, genuine laugh, has made him not only a respected leader, but someone people simply enjoy being around, a reminder that public service is at its best when rooted in humanity. And now therefore, the City Council does hereby formally thank and extend its deepest appreciation for the commitment, dedication, and public service calling of Robert Newsom Jr., for the excellent manner in which he has performed his duties as mayor, for his dedication to the community, and for the many hours devoted beyond the call of duty to the responsibilities of the office of mayor, and further extends its gratitude to his family for their support throughout his tenure. So saith me, Adam Lorraine, Deputy Mayor, and signed in kind by the rest of the city council, we thereby present you with the formal resolution. Thank you for indulging me while I continue through this script for the first time here. I would like to announce that now would be a great time for the members of our city council to express any additional words of appreciation to Mayor Robert Newsom, understanding that many have already been said. And I see that Councilmember Diaz Nash would like to begin.
Great. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. This is just a happy, happy occasion, and we're so glad you're all here. So I wrote my script and then I had to sanitize it so it would be something that we could read from the dais. So I just wanted to say, Rob, congratulations on an amazing year as San Mateo's mayor. And to the first family, as the deputy mayor said, even if you can't see me over the computer, thank you so much for all you have done to support your husband, your father, and to Minnie up in Dog Heaven, a special snuggle. She is still our first dog. We know that. And Deputy Mayor Lorraine mentioned all the reasons why you have been preparing for this job for your entire life. But the one thing he didn't mention, I don't think, is the fact that you had your own paper route. And therefore, you got to know everybody and everybody got to know you. And you know who to talk to about what, who to go to for what, and we have all depended upon that in making sure that all of this works. But you have just such a love of all things San Mateo that just courses through your veins. I mean, it is just, you live it. You don't have to mention it at all. It is so true. You have been the calm, steady hand that has guided our meetings, bringing a bit of levity when needed, pushing us to deal thoughtfully with tough questions and allowing us to do it the San Mateo way, till we can disagree with that being disagreeable. Also being a tremendous advocate for your district, District Three, while also being a tremendous advocate for everyone in San Mateo. And I think you exemplify that. When we started district elections, that was the concern. Would the district representatives be too just my district and not the rest of the city? You were the antithesis of that. You are the representation of what we wanted it to be. So you should be commended for that. Then, you know, everybody says you're a friendly guy, but I beg to say you are no pushover. And we have all experienced that. You lead based on very strong, strongly held values, and you respect everyone, but you do not let anyone cross the line and you stand up for those values in everything you do on and off the dais. And for that, you are just to be so commended. So you, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, and myself, we are the senior members of the council with, what, two and a half, three years under our belts? So absolutely, we are here. But when our future additional council members, Nicole Fernandez and Danielle Svirko Guditsky joined us, the two of you just fit in so smoothly. And I think we have been such a wonderful council together, and you have been so much a part of that. We work together, we debate together, but we have a lot of fun together. And that is what gets us through everything and hopefully is an example to everybody in the community. So I just wanted to say thank you for all you've given San Mateo in helping get us to the future. And I hope that after tonight...
Councilmember Svirko Guditsky.
Keep my comments short but sweet. I just wanted to extend my deep gratitude to you, Mayor Rob, for your service and unwavering commitment to the people of San Mateo and also to myself and Nicole as new council members. Your leadership in 2025 has shown what it means to truly care for a community, from standing for our city in the countywide efforts to recover millions in vital funding, to championing public safety, affordable housing, and a more vibrant downtown and park system. You have consistently put San Mateo first. Your dedication reflects not just the responsibilities of your office, but the heart of someone who has long called this community home. We're very grateful for your steady voice, your advocacy, and the countless hours you've invested to ensure that San Mateo continues to thrive. And I just wanted to say thank you again for your service, integrity, and commitment to building a better future for all of us. So thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So speak a little off the cuff here, but I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Svirko Guditsky said in that we were so lucky to have you as our first mayor, as council members. I have learned so much from you and how you prioritize and priority set and how you think through your votes. And I'm grateful to have been that. But beyond that, in this year, I'm so grateful, I love the fact that we're colleagues, but I'm grateful, even more grateful, that we're friends. And getting to know you personally and grabbing coffee and getting to see San Mateo through your eyes has been an amazing experience this year. You are a hometown boy through and through, and I don't know that anybody on this council, I mean, I love, I think we all love San Mateo, but I don't know that anybody else loves San Mateo as much as you do. And what an asset to San Mateo that is. I'm grateful for your leadership. When Lisa was mayor, she was known as the dancing mayor. And I would say that Mayor Newsom is the kindest mayor because he's just been an amazing colleague and a better friend. San Mateo is better for having had you as mayor, and I look forward to serving with you years in the future.
Well, I'll chip in a little here. I feel like we started off quite strongly with a number of wherases, and then we got some extra inputs. And I'll try not to say something that has already been said. I am going to fail on that, I think. But that's okay. It's worth saying multiple times that, you know, the first thing I think of when I think of Mayor Rob Newsom is firstly, that you were nearly everywhere this year, which I think is amazing because for somebody with a full-time job, and on top of that, a pretty significant professional change in your career while you were mayor that, you know, most folks would not have known about because you were here at all the meetings and you were everywhere you needed to be and quite a bit more. And, you know, I remember thinking fondly of Mayor's past, who made extra efforts to go to various events and things. I used to think, you know, that person cares because they're here with me and I know that something's important if the mayor is here. And so I imagine a lot of people this year got that impression and got an opportunity to be a part of something special with you. So thank you for that extra effort because it was certainly extra. You know, you also have a family. I am gonna have a hard time matching your level of effort this year, and you are to be commended for it. You're a great ambassador for the city of San Mateo, and many people have mentioned it, but I think it shows both in your attendance of events, but also in your great advertising of events. I feel like whenever I see you, I'm usually hearing about the next several things you'll be doing. And hey, are you gonna be there at this thing? be doing, and hey, are you gonna be there at this thing and that and the other? And it's like, oh, my goodness, oh, right. We have quite a bit going on in our fair city, and some people would not have known that had they not heard from you, whether it be here at City Hall or elsewhere. And as others have mentioned, you share that knowledge with a great bit of enthusiasm and energy. Everything is a positive, super cool thing, super cool sounding thing when you mention it. Makes me wanna go. So I imagine others got that vibe, too, and thank you for that. I appreciate your being authentic here. We had a conversation recently, and a bit of advice you gave me was to be authentic. And I appreciate hearing that from someone who I really feel is modeling the way on that. It takes guts to be honest and let your guard down and let folks know the workings of your mind when you're trying to make the best decision for your city, your district. Sometimes it's not easy, and sometimes you know you might upset some folks, or it might invoke feelings within you, and that's okay. And so I think you struck a good balance by letting people know that, you know, this matters to you, and you put a lot of heart into trying to make the best decision, and I really appreciated that from you. I think I'll just close by thanking you very much, Mayor Newsom, for your year of service, and invite everyone to engage in one more round of applause. And now we have some gifts. That's right. Firstly, Councilmember Fernandez will present the city's gift to Mayor Rob Newsom, an engraved Crystal Mayor's Gavel. Be careful with that one. And I have the honor of presenting you with another gift, a boutonniere that you may choose to wear, but I'm gonna admit, I might need help.
It's like prom all over. This will be a great excuse for why I'm teared up later. It's dang allergies.
You know, this is a great, I'm gonna take a small segue to mention another thing that I forgot to mention, which is, you know, being around Mayor Newsom is being around an extra dad. Because whether you like it or not, he has some fatherly advice for you, and it's positive, it's good advice. I remember, you know, anytime I have a sniffle, he has some ideas of, you know, getting some rest, getting some medicine and doing your best to be better. And so that was a moment that made me think of our shared city dad, Robert Newsom. We also have a gift certificate for a local restaurant. Well, and in addition to that, before we even present that, we have something for your family. Because we know there are many sacrifices given by the family in your year, and we want to express our appreciation to your wife, Jennifer. Councilmember Diaz Nash has the honor of presenting her with this splendid large bouquet. Thank you, Jennifer, and the first family for allowing us to have as much of Mayor Newsom as we did. And now finally, a gift certificate for a local restaurant treat presented by Councilmember That's right. Expressing appreciation for all the missed dinners this past year as mayor, we hope that offered some recompense. And now we will give the floor to our outgoing mayor for any final remarks you might have.
All right. I had this all queued up and, of course, timed out just before. Good evening again, everybody. Well, passing this gavel is a bit bittersweet. It's been such an honor to serve all of you this past year as the mayor of the city I've spent over 38 years of my life in. I truly do love San Mateo, and while much has changed since I grew up here, much remained one another. And in these uncertain times, Samateans still step up. We have a tight-knit sense of community, and all that we do, in spite of being the largest city in the county, still makes us feel like a small town. I'd like to start off by thanking my wife, Jennifer, and my daughters, Maven Mara. Thank you for coming along with me to so many city events this past year, and even more so, even more so for being without me when I attended so many city functions. One thing I am definitely looking forward to as I return to being a regular council member is to spend more time with all of you, because I know that my service to the city, particularly this past year, I've missed many things. I want my girls, Maven Mara, to know how incredibly proud I am of the young women that you've become. You both were great first daughters to the city of San Mateo, and you and your mom, my wife Jen, all represented our city so well this past year. I want to also thank my mom, who's sitting there in the front row, my brothers, sisters, mother-in-law, brother and sister-in-law, nieces and nephews, and all my aunts and uncles and cousins, especially the special ones who know who they are. I just can't list them all because the list is too long. I come from a large Irish Catholic family, and I married into an equally large family almost 20 years ago, and I'm so thankful to all of my family, extended family, and friends who consider themselves family for their support these past years, and especially this past year as I've served as the mayor. Next, I want to make sure to thank all four of you, my council colleagues, for your support, collaboration, and teamwork this past year. Nicole and Danielle, you both came in and got right to work, and I think that all five of us gelled very well as a council this past year. Even when we weren't in agreement, we listened to the community and to one another, and we tried to always do what was best for the city of San Mateo. I am confident that our new mayor and deputy mayor, who will not be named just yet, will continue to lead us forward. I'm also thankful to Councilmember Diaz Nash, who was the mayor before me and who, because of my inability to attend many midday events, probably cut more ribbons this year for new businesses than I did. Thank you, Lisa, for that. And Danielle, while we've agreed on most things, I also want you to know how much I've appreciated your inquisitive nature and your moxie this past year. You've always helped me dig into topics and ask smart questions. You've made me come across as a smarter person, so thank you for that. Again, I just want to thank all four of you, my council colleagues and friends, for what you've taught me this past year, and I look forward to continuing to serve with you. Next, I want to thank all of the city staff. Our city manager, Alex Kajikian, has truly continued to develop an incredible team. The city staff had a lot of attrition as we started here on the council and as we came out of the pandemic, but the city has hired over 200 new employees in the past two years, nearly 30% of new staff, and the team continues to grow and get stronger and more gelled and be even more successful. While I can't thank every city employee personally, please take to each of them my sincere appreciation for all their hard work that they do to make San Mateo such a great place to live and work. Thank you to our city attorney, Persana Rasia, and his team, who have had a busy year, and Persana probably doesn't want me to say more than that, but he's always done a great job of helping steer the city, and I appreciate all of your teams' done. Thank you to all of the department heads, which I are too numerous to mention, but for all of you for leading our city and your departments with such grace, both myself and my entire council are so appreciative. Thank you to the city clerk, Martin McTaggart, and his whole team that run such a tight ship for all of our meetings and special meetings and events. And also a special shout out to Deputy Clerk Chantal Eaton, who was part of our delegation that went to Toianaca this past summer for the World Expo. We saw much of the city of Toianaca's infrastructure, and it was an incredible, educational, and inspiring trip. And Chantal, we really thank you for all the hard work you did to make that trip what it was. Thank you. Thank you to all who have served this past year on boards, commissions, or foundations. Your contributions to the city are what helped make it great, and you are also vital in helping us get community input. Thank you. John Mays, the editor of the San Mateo Journal, gave us some good advice late November of last year. He suggested that the next council get back to basics. And in my state of the city at the beginning of my term, I said that while my goals for this year might not be sexy, I wanted to see us work and focus on four important spokes in the city's wheel: infrastructure, public safety, budget, and community engagement. And I know these don't sound like the most exciting aspects of the city, but now, a year later, I can confidently say that our city has made significant progress in all four of these aspects to move San Mateo forward. Thank you again to the council and the entire staff for this incredible progress. Finally, I'd like to thank all of you, the residents of San Mateo. Thank you for your community engagement. Thank you for your passion about all aspects of our city, large and small, and yes, we've heard all of them. I hope that in my year as mayor, you have all felt heard, and that you've all observed that our council has worked hard to try to find compromise when necessary, but to always move the city forward. Please keep coming to meetings. Please continue to show the love and care that we, the council and city staff, all hold for San Mateo. Thank you again to everyone, one and all, for an incredible experience of being the mayor this past year. I look forward to continuing to serve on the council next year, and I'm extremely, extremely proud and thankful for this experience. And now, in dad-like form, let's go, San Mateo. And I made it through that without getting choked up, so one more round of applause. Just kidding. All right. Now I call on city clerk, Martin McTaggart, to provide the presentation on the city council reorganization process.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. There, let me just one moment. My name is Martin McTaggart, and I am your city clerk. I have a very brief presentation for you tonight to set the table for what is about to occur, which is the city council's annual reorganization. To lay the foundation, the city charter, section 2.09, states that the city council shall meet at its first regular council meeting in December to elect a mayor and a deputy mayor. The city council has adopted rules and procedures to assist with this process. They identify a succession process for identifying the mayor and deputy mayor through a rotation cycle. Each council member has a specified position in the rotation sequence. In any year, the first person in the sequence is typically selected as mayor, and the second in the sequence is selected as deputy mayor. After serving as mayor, that council member generally moves to the end of the rotation sequence, and the other four council members move forward. While it's not applicable in tonight's scenario, it is worth noting that if two or more council members are newly elected or appointed at the same time, the newly elected or appointed council members shall draw lots to determine their position relative to one another within the rotation sequence. Also stated within the city council's adopted rules and procedures are that when the council performs its reorganization, it is accustomed for the outgoing mayor to nominate the deputy mayor to exceed them in the sequence as mayor, and the newly appointed mayor will then nominate the next council member in that rotational sequence to serve as the deputy mayor for the coming year. The slide shows the current rotation sequence with Mayor Newsom in first position, Deputy Mayor Lorraine in second position, council member Fernandez in third, council member Sverko Kuditsky in fourth, and finally, council member Diaz Nash in fifth position. So when applied, our council rules and procedures under current guidelines, Deputy Mayor Lorraine is due for rotation into the mayor position. Councilmember Fernandez is due for rotation into the deputy mayor position. Councilmember Sverko Kuditsky would move into position three within the sequence. Councilmember Diaz Nash would move to number four, and Mayor Newsom would move to the end of the rotation sequence. And just to caveat that, that this process, as prescribed within the council's adopted rules and procedures, are a guideline. They can, however, be altered by a majority of the city council, should they choose to do so. So with that, we will, staff's recommendation is for the council to move forward with the selection of the mayor and deputy mayor, which is accomplished through a nomination, a second, and then a vote of the council. Once this has taken place, we will receive public comment. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Clerk. So with that, I believe it is to me to nominate the next mayor of San Mateo. Is that accurate?
Correct.
All right. I would like to nominate Deputy Mayor Adam Lorraine to be the next mayor of San Mateo. Can I get a second? Can we please call roll?
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverko Kuditsky?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Gratefully, yes.
The motion carries.
And now I will pass it off to the newly appointed mayor, Adam Lorraine, to nominate a deputy
Thank you very much. As is my expected role in the council rotation, I would like to nominate the next deputy mayor with a pin. One that was given me by Mayor Rob Newsom Jr., and I will pass on, as tradition suggests, to Councilmember Nicole Fernandez. Do I have a second? City Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, Mayor Lorraine. Councilmember Fernandez, sorry, excuse me, Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverko Kuditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Gratefully, yes.
And Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
The motion carries, five zero.
All right. Seat shuffle begins.
We stay. No, Danielle and I.
I'm yelling, yeah.
It was on the end stage.
Want to switch chairs?
Thank you very much for bearing with us through that. And before we move on to public comment, I would like to offer this opportunity for the newly appointed Deputy Mayor Fernandez. If she would like to say anything, she's welcome. If she would like to say anything, she's welcome to do so.
Oh, yes, I'm still new to this location. Please forgive me. Mr. Mayor, I like saying that. Mr. Mayor, is this an appropriate time to feed you, or is that coming later?
I'm not even sure what that means. Probably not. I would say this is your moment.
Okay. I just want to say that I am incredibly grateful for this honor, and I'm exceedingly grateful that San Mateo has put its faith in me to be its deputy mayor, and I look forward to working in partnership with you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of our council on staff, and all of our residents.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Diaz Nash, did you want to mention something?
How could you tell? How could you tell?
Now, is that mayoral sense?
It's... Isn't he amazing? Thirty seconds in the job, and he's gotten it all down now. But just a couple of very brief things, starting off with our new deputy mayor, Fernandez. I want to congratulate you and say it has been such a pleasure having you as a seatmate this past year. We have done a lot of great work together, and you bring more knowledge about government and process and getting things done than all of us put together. So we are so lucky to have you on the council, and I look forward to supporting you this year and to continue to have lots of fun. And then, in terms of our new mayor, Mayor Lorraine, I just wanted to welcome you to your new seat as mayor. You obviously wear it very well already, and I know you have probably been thoroughly preparing for it like you do for everything. You have researched, you have talked to people, you have asked questions and developed your own perspective, and I know you will take your role as mayor very seriously and always try and do your best for San Mateo. And I, and I'm sure all my council members, are very, very grateful for that. But what I hope you don't set aside becoming a mayor is your genuine enjoyment in and excitement about so many of the topics that we discuss: sustainability, clean energy, cycling, and even trash. Bring out joy in Mayor Lorraine's... See, look at that, he's already demonstrating. It's great. And they all come to mind. You happily geek out on these subjects, and I encourage you to always continue to do that, because we talked about former mayor, this is probably the first time anybody's said that, Newsom, he is just so authentic. You are so authentic in so many of your areas, and please continue to do that, because that brings so much to our council and our community, and it's also contagious. And there's one other thing that I hope that you will continue. During former Mayor Newsom's tenure, all meetings started and ended on the same day. So he is very proud of that tradition. I think he is definitely able to keep that, and in my opinion, it's a tradition that we should continue. So please reach out if I can be any of assistance, and there's a lot going on, but apparently I have great ribbon-cutting skills that I would love to offer to your services, well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Diaz Nash. Councilmember Newsom, do you have something to share?
I do. First off, Nicole, I think I've told you this already, but you had us all fooled when you started on the council, because we were all thinking of you as a rookie. It only took about five minutes to realize that in your career as supporting... for supporting politicians, you are nothing, nothing, not anywhere near a novice. Thank you for all your support this past year, and for all the times you've helped me navigate the system, because you know how to do it from the inside. I know you're going to be a great deputy mayor, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve with you this coming year. And Adam, we had a great coffee a couple of weekends ago, so I'm not going to go into what we talked about, other than I want you to remember that I told you then, so I've already beat Lisa to the punch on this, that I plan on calling you the green mayor. And I know that you'll continue your sustainability bent in your mayorship, and I really want to make sure that you know that you have my support in doing that. I wish you nothing but good luck this year, and I know you're going to do a great job helping San Mateo continue to move forward, and please know that you have my unwavering support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is not required for everybody to say something. Only volunteers.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. Before we move on to the program and you get to say your remarks, may I just say something very briefly? So you were very kind enough... You're kind enough to get me this gift as the deputy mayor, which looks like a sheriff's badge, but I wanted to say that I got you a gift as well, the coming mayor. If you see Mayor Lorraine around town, you know he's usually on his bike, and so you want to make sure... And I wanted to make sure you could be identified when you're on your bike, so I got you a bike helmet cover that is green, because it's just because you love sustainability, and you can probably, you can put it on your bike helmet, and everybody will know that it's the mayor riding by.
Shall we try it?
We shall!
I wish I was the mayor.
Let's go on the front.
We're falling apart, so, yeah, there we are.
Sorry. Okay, let's try this.
We'll try it once, and if it doesn't work, I'll try it later and show it off.
Okay, well, it'll fit eventually. How many mayors or deputy mayors take to put the thing on the helmet? It will fit, but I just wanted to give that to you, because I think as you're going to enjoy this mayor, and you're going to be the one mayor on the peninsula that is on his bike more than any other mayor on the peninsula, so I'm really excited for you.
I appreciate this. Now I have a mayor helmet cover, and I have a ball cap that says cyclist, a gift from former mayor Sue Lempert, so it'll be very clear who I am. Thank you for this. Okay. Going once for any final comments before I might say a few words. Okay, going twice, seeing none. Good evening, everyone. To my colleagues on the council and to this community, I want to thank you for placing your trust in me tonight. I also wanted to appreciate and acknowledge my family and friends, some of whom are with us in City Hall tonight, and some of whom are watching us from across the country, from Tracy in Sacramento in California, to Santa Fe, New Mexico, the town of Lewiston, New York, and historic Lewiston, and Queens in New York City, and perhaps some places in between. I would not be here tonight without all of your support. Thank you. And thank you very much to city manager Alex Kojikian, our department heads, and the hundreds of city employees who work for this great city. Everything I mentioned tonight going forward is, as something that the city is doing, is the work of these fine folks. I am a city employee, but a part-time one, and mainly a representative of that great work, standing on the shoulders of giants. I had the pleasure of joining this year's employee recognition lunch. We had a record number of employees in attendance, and I mentioned then that I was proud to be there for that milestone, and yet I believe that our best days in the city of San Mateo are still ahead of us. So it's a pleasure and an honor to be with you tonight, to talk about the achievements we've made together to date, and that which we will complete together in the future. I'm proud of the progress we've made together this year. In a year that brought its fair share of uncertainty, even as federal and state budget conditions shifted, San Mateo stayed disciplined and steady. We took a measured approach, took stock of our resources, protecting what matters most, and positioning ourselves for long-term stability. That meant making thoughtful decisions, reallocating our reserves more strategically, completing a comprehensive assessment of our facilities and assets, thanks in part to our former mayor, Rob Newsom, and advancing a fiscal sustainability plan. At the same time, we continue to plan ahead by creating a capital investment reserve and by responsibly exploring additional revenue options for our future. For residents, this work is not abstract. It shows up in everyday life here in our city. It shows up when storm season arrives and neighborhoods stay protected. It shows up when you visit a park or library that's been renovated or expanded. It shows up when your street feels safe, when downtown is lively, and when our infrastructure quietly does its job. This year, we saw evidence of community investment all across San Mateo: insurance relief thanks to stronger flood protection work in North Central and North Shoreview, updated amenities under construction at Central Park, East Hillsdale Park, the Marina Library, and more; expanded cultural programming and new public safety initiatives, and meaningful milestones on affordable housing, including seeing projects like Kikue Crossing fully occupied. These are things residents can and will see, feel, and enjoy, and they reflect a city that is continuing to move forward. We can expect more of this to come next year. As I step into this role of mayor in 2026, my focus will be simple and consistent. It's the same focus I had as deputy mayor this year and council member since 2022, to ensure that San Mateo continues to provide an excellent quality of life for everyone who lives, works, or visits here today and for the generations that will follow. We know that this is not automatic, nor can it be taken for granted. It requires steady investment throughout, as well as responsible choices today that will build toward a sustainable future tomorrow. The ribbon cutting of our new $597 million wastewater treatment plant, part of a nearly $1 billion, 10-year clean water program, marks one of the largest and most important infrastructure upgrades in our city's history. This upgrade ensures clean water, environmental stewardship, and system reliability today and for decades to come. It also includes a bigger capacity to store more water during storms to prevent sanitary sewer overflows. San Mateo property owners recently voted to approve the Community Flood and Storm Protection Fee, a testament to the understanding and commitment of our residents to invest in our community's collective safety and well-being. Thanks in part to this new funding source, our city has invested more resources in preparing our current infrastructure to protect us during atmospheric rivers that appear to be coming more frequently and with more intense periods in a changing climate. We are also updating our citywide storm drain master plan, long-term framework that will guide how we improve, improve our drainage, reduce flooding risks, and strengthen neighborhood resilience across San Mateo tomorrow. In fact, we'll hear more about it in our next meeting, if you want to come, it's great. We'll also soon begin creating a climate adaptation plan that'll help protect the city from flooding that may be caused by sea level rise. These are all examples of the importance of continued capital investment in good years and in tighter ones, so that we can maintain and improve our parks, libraries, public facilities, and emergency services without deferring costs to our future. As we invest in our foundation, we also have the opportunity to shape our city's next chapter. With Measure T approved, we can fully implement our General Plan 2040, a roadmap that's rooted in what residents have consistently told us they value: safer neighborhoods, better transportation options, a more vibrant and walkable downtown, and housing that keeps San Mateo welcoming and livable for all. Realizing this vision will require changes to our city over time. Change truly is the one constant we can count on in our future, but when we face it thoughtfully together, we have an opportunity to make it work for us toward our needs and goals. My mission as mayor will be to help connect the dots between the groundwork laid here in City Hall, in our budget planning, our strategic plan updates, implementation of our general plan, and more, and that tangible evidence of community investment that we are seeing around us, and how it will meet our needs and goals step by step. San Mateo has long been a regional leader in sustainability and innovation. We've shown what's possible here with reach codes that have increased access to electric vehicle chargers and led to housing developments with healthier indoor environments and reduced energy emissions for a healthier outdoor environment. Kikue Crossing was made possible by making a strategic capital investment, converting affordable housing funds, and city-owned, street-level parking lots, to create over 200 all-electric, all-affordable housing units, right in our walkable, transit-oriented downtown, as well as a new multi-story parking garage that replaced and exceeded existing parking availability. We established a pedestrian mall downtown, first piloted in response to an emergency to help support local businesses. Then we improved it with material and programmatic investments in response to overwhelmingly positive support from our community. It's now at once an example of local economic development, an increased recreation and public space in a car-free environment, made possible by strategic parking management and assets such as the Kikue Crossing parking garage, which is only a couple blocks away. Notice the relationships between these projects, each coming in at different times, but contributing more than the sum of their parts toward our goals of increased affordable housing and environmental sustainability that maintains a high quality of life in San Mateo today and going forward. Visionary programs and projects like these demonstrate that realizing our community's current and future goals is possible here. As mayor of San Mateo, I will highlight such work in 2026 to continue showing that it can be done here, with a spirit of collaboration and a clear vision for our future. For me, this work is personal. I grew up here. I know what it feels like to walk these streets as a kid, as a student, and now as someone entrusted with helping to guide our shared future. That perspective keeps me grounded. It reminds me that the decisions we make today can ripple out for decades, and it's why I'm committed to leading with steadiness, openness, and a focus on solutions. Our community has always been strongest when it's engaged in this work together, when people show up, speak out, and pitch in. If we continue to move forward together with that same spirit, there is nothing we can't accomplish. It can be done here, and it will be done here. I'm honored to step into this role. I'm energized by the work ahead, and I'm grateful to be doing this together with all of you. Wow. Thank you very much. Okay. I appreciate you indulging me on that before the next item, which is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda?
Mayor Lorraine? Just before we move to general public comment, we do have some requests to speak on the ceremonial portion of this evening's proceedings.
Yes, of course.
So we will invite individuals who wish to speak. If you wish to speak on our ceremonial items, and you have not provided me with a request to speak, so please do so at your earliest opportunity. We'll be receiving public comment on both ceremonial items on our agenda tonight. If you are participating in our virtual and... If you are participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. We will be inviting up the speakers in council chambers first, beginning with Sarah Phelps, followed by Vikash and Kevin Simpson.
Good evening, council. I'm going to keep this short because I know everybody's probably ready to go by now. I'm here on behalf of my boss, Assembly Member Diane Pappin, and we just wanted to congratulate Mayor Rob, well, now former Mayor Rob, and now Mayor Adam, on your terms as mayor and deputy mayor. And we wanted to wish you both the best of luck, and also to my best friend Nicole. Congratulations on being deputy. So I just wanted to present these certificates to the two of you. We can get a picture either now or at the end of the meeting, whichever you prefer. But I want to make sure that I give these to you.
Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Fernandez. Good evening, Councilmembers Swerko, Godiskey, and good evening, former Mayor Nash, and honorable former Mayor Newsom. This is a special night. It is interesting that you and I met probably about a year ago, little over a year ago, and probably one of the happier moments as a resident of San Mateo. You represent balance, as has been said earlier. You don't get pushed over, you're not a pushover, and you know how to give feedback when it's necessary. And I'm very grateful for that. One of the things that I do want to thank you greatly for is when we ran across each other was because of the advocacy for the 5G small cell tower group. It takes one hell of a backbone to stand up to a trillion-dollar industry, and you did that. And if that's not a reason to have you back in your second term by a landslide, I don't know what else is. And that should be acknowledged all over San Mateo because that effort was to protect all the residents of San Mateo for their health, well-being, and longevity. And finally, now that you have some more time, you have an open invitation to come to walk out to Seal Park, Sawyer Camp Trail, anytime, just ping me and we'll go. Thank you so much for your service, and I look forward to seeing you second term. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker in chambers will be Kevin Simpson.
Good evening, council. Good evening, new mayor, former mayors, mayors-to-be. It's nice to see our district represented in the deputy slot again. I often am here and I'm mad about something. I'm here today and I decided to speak to try and push this meeting into Tuesday. But no, really, I just wanted to say that, thank the outgoing mayor for a year of really caring for the community. Everybody who gets up here who is mad, or angry, or upset, or pushing some kind of an issue has been treated with respect, in my memory, for the most part. But this last year really showed that we focused on caring about the community, and I think that the dad trope really works for Mayor Newsom. I hope in this coming year, we're going to have a lot of business to do together as a community, and I hope that this next year is one of challenge. I really hope that we can lean forward a little bit. You know, recent events have knocked us all for a loop. We've had a lot of challenges we maybe didn't anticipate that we were going to have, and they turned out to be steeper than we thought they would be. In this coming year, we should step out of somewhat of the reaction mode, and I hope, based on your remarks tonight, Mayor Lorraine, that we really see that we challenge ourselves for excellence, that we make an effort, we don't retract, and we don't regress, and we don't shrink away from things when they don't always work out exactly the way we want to. I'm thinking about some of the heat that was generated about the pedestrian mall. I'm thinking about bike lanes. I'm thinking about pushback we get on a lot of things that we do to advance the very agenda that you talked about tonight. So I really encourage you and the deputy mayor and the whole council, lean forward. It's time to challenge the community a little bit. That's the only way we're going to grow, and we really need to listen, especially here, I am an old gray-haired person now, although that's not what I actually look like. I'm here to say that we need to listen to the young people. The remarks given by this young man are a perfect example of that. I haven't heard a public remark that well-crafted in a long time. So I hope that you will lean forward, listen to our young people, because that's who we need to be shaping this community for. So congratulations on a great year, and what I hope will be a great coming year, and thank you very much, all of you, for your service.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Gina Pappin.
Good evening, and congratulations to Mayor Lorraine and new deputy mayor Nicole Fernandez. I want to thank Mayor Newsom and actually the entire council. I am your Metropolitan Transportation Commissioner, and it's been a pleasure working with you all, and as will be for the upcoming year. We have a lot of exciting things to look forward to, and it's so nice to see the entire council getting along so well and being so productive. Not that you have to agree on everything, but this is really a beautiful thing, and I'm sure you will continue to do a wonderful job for the city of San Mateo and also San Mateo County. So again, congratulations. Thank you all for your service, and look forward to working with you into the future.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, where our final speaker will be Alexis Lewis. Please unmute your mic.
Good morning. Good morning, I'm sorry. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm a resident of San Mateo District 3. City council members serve as the governing body of the city. Their role is to cultivate a culture of civic engagement and service, support the local economy, promote and celebrate the city's diversity, and ensure that all residents feel seen, valued, and represented. I believe council members should actively participate and collaborate with the communities, through social gatherings, public events, and meaningful connection. I want to express my gratitude to former Mayor Newsom for serving as a mayor for all of San Mateo. Your leaderships and your visible presence throughout our community have been truly valued and appreciated. And to you, Mayor Lorraine, I believe you are the perfect person to continue this work with integrity, compassion, and heart. Congratulations on becoming our new mayor, and I look forward to your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Lorraine, that concludes public comment on ceremonial portions of tonight's agenda.
Thank you to everyone who gave comments, and thank you to the city clerk for rescuing me from skipping that by accident. Thank goodness we did not do that. Okay. Now, though, we will head to the next item on the agenda, which is general public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on our agenda this evening may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. City clerk, please tally the number of requests to speak on general public comment.
Certainly. Mayor Lorraine, currently I have one request to speak in council chambers, two requests to speak in council chambers. If you wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. We'll give you just a moment to do so. Mayor Lorraine, that is a total of three requests to speak for general public comment. We will begin with our request to speak in council chambers, where we have two speakers. Our first speaker will be Robert Harker, followed by our final speaker in chambers, which will be Rick Bonilla.
Dear council, dear mayor, etc., my name is Robert Harker, and I am here to invite you to the beginning of George Orwell's 1984. We are in the process of deploying mass surveillance across America pervasive our homes, our streets, our businesses. We have this huge AI structure. This is what was described in 1984. I'm here tonight to talk about the Flock APLRS cameras, automated license plate readers. First of all, I'd like to talk about Flock in general. The company's hardware is really bad. It has numerous security vulnerabilities, including a very simple one that if I shimmy up the pole, press a button a certain number of times, don't have to remove a cover, I gain access to the web administrative interface of that camera. I have given the clerk a URL to a video that talks about this. It's pretty serious. If your Wi-Fi router had these problems, you throw it out. Flock's answer to security problems are NDAs, non-disclosure agreements. Their history of responding to security issues is really bad. And that sort of leads me into the next thing, is that the Flock program at the city is incredibly opaque. There is a webpage about the program that says almost absolutely nothing about the program, other than how great it is. It has a reference to a police, an 850-page police document using a standard web trick, which is you list the document, and a reference to it, assuming that most people are not going to download the document and then dig through it to find what the information. There is no information about data retention, who has access to it, et cetera. I actually dug through the document, and I saw the policy and procedure, and my take on it is that anybody who has the training has access to the data. I have a separate request, a couple of requests for cost estimates for a copy of the Flock contract. I would also like to see an inventory of where the cameras are. I don't know why this is secret information. I went out hunting Flock cameras, and I found a lot. I also would like to know about the federal government querying our data. And I'm curious to whether those are covered by NDAs, whether I'll be able to see that data. And this is just, the whole thing is very concerning to me. A final comment, moving the comment period to the end of the meeting is a great way to discourage the public from talking to you. It's been my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Bonilla.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you for being here tonight. Thank you all for having the courage to step up, to fill those seats that had been filled by those before you. And I urge you to always remember that those who were sitting in those seats before you, and the people of San Mateo, are the ones who have done all the great things that the new mayor just talked about tonight. We together have worked to bring all these things about. It is a great city. We still have some homeless, though. We still have some issues. You know what those issues are, I'm not going to list them. But we have work to do. That's my message. And I urge you to seek every opportunity to learn what we can do, how we can do, to help people. So we, just take away the difficulties that people here in our city that we love are having a lesser quality of life, a lesser experience of life. Being in this place is not great. Being a child in poverty is bad. We can fix that. Those things don't just happen. We have a system that allows that to happen, our economic system. It has flaws. We need to work to fix those things whenever we can. Also, I appreciate the comments of the gentleman that came before me, and this young man right here. This guy is great. I'm going to talk to him later. Thanks.
Thank you. That moves us to our virtual environment, where our one and only speaker will be Astrid. Astrid, please unmute your mic.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This is Astrid Vardaresian, and I live at the Loredale condominiums on George Avenue in San Mateo. And I'm delighted to hear that our new mayor takes joy even in trash, because that's what this is about. On October 20, I came to the council with an issue we were having with Recology on our twice-yearly bulky item pickups. I asked the council for help in connecting with someone at Recology who was in a position to listen to our problems and help us resolve them. The very next day, I received an email from a contact who put me in touch with a Recology representative named Monica DiVincenzi, who did just that. She came out and brought Mike Green, our supervisor for the area, and we toured the property to designate the right locations and sizes for bins more sufficient to handle our needs. The week of November 17, we had the first successful bulky pickup we've had in years. No messy overflowing bins, less waste from strangers dumping, and much better for both Recology and the owners. Monica and I stayed in touch the whole time, and it went very well. We'll stay in touch for the spring pickup as well. I'm here to offer a heartfelt thanks from our whole community, that's 328 residents, for the help that the council and Mayor Newsom gave us. Many people told me it would make no difference to come to the council with our problems, and I'm so glad to report they were proved wrong. We want to say that your receptiveness and your timely help are so very much appreciated. We did feel heard. The fact that we can count on our representatives to hear us and help us is a wonderful thing, especially in these times. We want to be sure you know that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Lorraine, that concludes general public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everybody who gave public comments, and I think typically this is a time at which I might ask staff if there was anything they might like to say about what we heard. Although frankly, I recall being in receipt of an email from Mr. Harker earlier, and so I believe there will be a follow-up. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. City Manager? Very good. We have now completed general public comment. Just going to check to see anything else we need to do. There's one more thing, which is, we'd like to take an opportunity to thank and appreciate, of course, everybody who joined us tonight for this meeting, but in particular, a few dignitaries who happen to be among us. And I believe the deputy mayor would like to shout them out in our appreciation for your being here tonight.
Yeah, we just want to take, we want to thank all of you for being here tonight, but I just want to take an opportunity to thank the many elected officials and their staff who are here tonight in support of our council. I want to thank former mayor Rick Bonilla for being here, former council member Rich Hedges for being here, Vice Mayor Emily Ramos of Mountain View, soon to be mayor next month, council member Charlie Chang of Sunnyvale, up until today, former mayor of Foster City, Stacy Jimenez, who just completed her term as mayor. Congratulations. Mark Hirschman, the former mayor of Milbury, and now with Peninsula Clean Energy, which has a new name, Westlight Energy.
Westlight.
Westlight Energy.
Power of We.
The Power of We. Former mayor, Milbury council member Gina Pappin, and current MTC commissioner, the district director for Senator Josh Becker, Joan Dantler, who is here, Congressman Mullins' press secretary Samantha Weigl is here, also a former employee of the city of San Mateo, Jean Kim, who is on the San Mateo Foster City Board, Sarah Phelps on behalf of Assembly Member Pappin, and then the legend herself, Assembly Member Pappin herself, who is here. So thank you for spending the evening with us, everybody. We are grateful for We are grateful for you spending time with us, and I will give it back to the mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good to have somebody on council who knows everyone and anyone, and of course, there are even more among you, but let us take the opportunity to celebrate this evening with a bit of refreshments. As we adjourn this evening's meeting, I invite all of you to join us in the atrium, which is just over there, for a post-meeting reception. Please come share a toast as we look ahead to the year to come. Unless I missed anything, Mr. City Clerk, I think I will be adjourning this meeting, but I just want to point out just one small thing. This is really for my family who probably already went to bed, but this, I have, I brought my own gavel tonight. Yeah, this is not, it was gifted to me by Donna and Steve Lorraine from Santa Fe, New Mexico. They actually gave this to me. I was told this was purchased in a museum as a gavel that had been previously used by the Oklahoma State Legislature and adorned, as you might see, perhaps at least in the video, with beads from a local North American, sorry, Native American tribe. And it was given to me when I was appointed to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in hopes that I might get to use it when I became the chair potentially of that commission, and I did become the chair, but funny thing, we were sheltering in place unfortunately during that time, so I never actually got to use it for many years until tonight. All right. And with that, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.